Do I have a motion to go executive session?
It's almost been tied. Do I have a motion to go into executive session? Do you read your Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. In accordance with the South Carolina Code of Laws 1976, Section 30-4-3D, In accordance with the South Carolina Code of Laws 1976, Section 30-4-3D, as amended as amended notification of the meeting and meeting agenda was adjusted at least 24 hours notification of the meeting and meeting agenda was adjusted at least 24 hours prior prior to the meeting on the County Council Building at a publicly accessible place on to the meeting on the County Council Building at a publicly accessible place on the county the county website, a copy of the agenda was provided to the local news media and non-personal website, a copy of the agenda was provided to the local news media and non-personal support support organizations requesting notification. organizations requesting notification.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I will do the pledge of allegiance and Mr. Rowl will do the invitation. I will do the pledge of allegiance and Mr. Rowl will do the invitation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all. all.
Let us pray. Let us pray. Father, thank you for this day and thank you for our time to come together to make decisions Father, thank you for this day and thank you for our time to come together to make decisions on the benefit of Jasper County. on the benefit of Jasper County. Father, we pray for our county, our state, and our nation, and guide us tonight with Father, we pray for our county, our state, and our nation, and guide us tonight with the answers to all the questions that we may have. the answers to all the questions that we may have. We ask all these things in your name. We ask all these things in your name. Amen. Amen.
Do I have discussion on the approval of the agenda? Do I have discussion on the approval of the agenda? I would also like to include an executive session to receive legal advice on position I would also like to include an executive session to receive legal advice on position of a public agency and placing on the agenda as 3A. of a public agency and placing on the agenda as 3A. Subject would be 2025-2026 Jasper County budget. Subject would be 2025-2026 Jasper County budget. Do I have any other discussion? Do I have any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Chairman. We'd like to make a change also to item number seven, a correction for the second reading We'd like to make a change also to item number seven, a correction for the second reading after the final. after the final.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor raise their right hand. All those in favor raise their right hand. Aye. Aye. All against? All against? Hearing none? Hearing none? Agenda has been approved. Agenda has been approved. We'd like to have a public... We'd like to have a public... You don't know how difficult this is here. You don't know how difficult this is here. Oh, here it is. Oh, here it is. Public comment. Public comment. Thirty minutes are allocated to the public comment, and each speaker is allotted three Thirty minutes are allocated to the public comment, and each speaker is allotted three minutes. minutes. Speakers may donate, not donate, transfer, yield, or give any of their speaking times Speakers may donate, not donate, transfer, yield, or give any of their speaking times to another person. to another person. Speakers may sign up in our agenda list maintained by the board for the council prior to each Speakers may sign up in our agenda list maintained by the board for the council prior to each meeting and include their name, address, and include the subject and purpose for which meeting and include their name, address, and include the subject and purpose for which they seek to address the council. they seek to address the council. All public comments shall be directed to the county council as a whole and not to any All public comments shall be directed to the county council as a whole and not to any member thereof. member thereof. Speakers shall confine their comments under the jurisdiction of the county council and Speakers shall confine their comments under the jurisdiction of the county council and shall not use public comment, period, to promote, advertise, awards, businesses, services, shall not use public comment, period, to promote, advertise, awards, businesses, services, or candidates for public office. or candidates for public office. Council does not take action based on public comment at the meeting. Council does not take action based on public comment at the meeting. As council does not take action on items not on the agenda, the chairman may direct As council does not take action on items not on the agenda, the chairman may direct the speaker to contact the administrator to give or receive additional information. the speaker to contact the administrator to give or receive additional information. All speakers should be mindful and respectful for those participating in or present at All speakers should be mindful and respectful for those participating in or present at the meeting. the meeting. Speakers are to be civil in their language, and they shall refrain from comment on behavior Speakers are to be civil in their language, and they shall refrain from comment on behavior that includes name-calling, personal attacks, threats, obscene language, and/or disruptive that includes name-calling, personal attacks, threats, obscene language, and/or disruptive actions. actions. Ms. Kooler, Debbie Kooler? Ms. Kooler, Debbie Kooler?
All right. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. My name is Debbie Kooler, and I am coming to you today not only as a native of Jasper My name is Debbie Kooler, and I am coming to you today not only as a native of Jasper County and of Richland, but I live here permanently now, and I am the most recent president of County and of Richland, but I live here permanently now, and I am the most recent president of Jasper County Historical Society. Jasper County Historical Society. And half of the room are our board of directors and our leadership team, so we're here to And half of the room are our board of directors and our leadership team, so we're here to support you. support you. How many of you on the council are members of the Historical Society? How many of you on the council are members of the Historical Society? Okay. Okay. Well, we might be able to change that if you'll work with us. Well, we might be able to change that if you'll work with us. We are under the impression that... We are under the impression that... And I have my timer on, so let me stop it for a minute. And I have my timer on, so let me stop it for a minute. Based upon the last meeting and a few other things that we have heard through the grapevine, Based upon the last meeting and a few other things that we have heard through the grapevine, I'm coming to you today because I feel, we feel, that the Jasper County Historical Society I'm coming to you today because I feel, we feel, that the Jasper County Historical Society is getting bad rap. is getting bad rap. And we feel like what I think is along party lines, not necessarily split to the red line And we feel like what I think is along party lines, not necessarily split to the red line or the blue line, but the party line. or the blue line, but the party line. Today, we have cell phones, but many of you are not old enough to remember, but you may Today, we have cell phones, but many of you are not old enough to remember, but you may have seen pictures of those big, old, clunky desk phones, the ones on the wall where we have seen pictures of those big, old, clunky desk phones, the ones on the wall where we used to have party lines. used to have party lines. If you recall or have heard stories how they work, somebody would pick up the use of the If you recall or have heard stories how they work, somebody would pick up the use of the line, and there'd be somebody on the line, right? line, and there'd be somebody on the line, right? And so they'd ease the phone right back down. And so they'd ease the phone right back down. Do you remember that? Do you remember that? Okay. Okay. Somebody else about five or 10 minutes later would pick up the line, they'd hear another Somebody else about five or 10 minutes later would pick up the line, they'd hear another snippet, and it'd ease it back down. snippet, and it'd ease it back down. Maybe a third person. Maybe a third person. Maybe it was the first person again, and this time they'd listen for maybe six, seven, Maybe it was the first person again, and this time they'd listen for maybe six, seven, or eight minutes, and would get flustered. or eight minutes, and would get flustered. Well, they were getting snippets of information, not the whole picture. Well, they were getting snippets of information, not the whole picture. And we feel like the Jasper County Historical Society and the museum is much like that And we feel like the Jasper County Historical Society and the museum is much like that party line. party line. Just like the party line is getting snippets of information and miscommunication, we feel Just like the party line is getting snippets of information and miscommunication, we feel that the image of the Historical Society and of the museum, y'all are getting snippets that the image of the Historical Society and of the museum, y'all are getting snippets and not the whole picture. and not the whole picture. So what I plan to do is to set up the meeting, and we are asking you, Chairman Kemp, we So what I plan to do is to set up the meeting, and we are asking you, Chairman Kemp, we specifically, because you are the ones that had so many questions last time, we will specifically, because you are the ones that had so many questions last time, we will work around your schedule, and as many of the council members that come, I'm going work around your schedule, and as many of the council members that come, I'm going to plan a meeting, and we will meet in the boardroom of the chamber of the museum, the to plan a meeting, and we will meet in the boardroom of the chamber of the museum, the Jasper County Museum. Jasper County Museum. And that way, we can get everything together. And that way, we can get everything together. Are you willing to do that? Are you willing to do that?
I'm willing to do it. I'm willing to do it.
Pardon me? Pardon me?
Yes. Yes.
Good. Good. How about y'all? How about y'all? Boy, that sounds like a good idea. Boy, that sounds like a good idea. Well, I'm here to say that I've done what I'm here to do, and I would like to reflect Well, I'm here to say that I've done what I'm here to do, and I would like to reflect on one other thing. on one other thing. Having lived away for a long time and having come back, it's important when we reflect Having lived away for a long time and having come back, it's important when we reflect on our history together, if we get on the same page, it's going to directly impact the on our history together, if we get on the same page, it's going to directly impact the future. future. So we look forward to it. So we look forward to it. Expect to call. Expect to call. Okay? Okay? Thank you. Thank you.
At the end of public comment, I'd like to have a motion go executive session. At the end of public comment, I'd like to have a motion go executive session.
Mr. Chairman, would you make a motion to go into executive session? Mr. Chairman, would you make a motion to go into executive session?
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second. Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
All those in favor raise their right hand, say aye. All those in favor raise their right hand, say aye. 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 All against? All against? Hearing none? Hearing none? Going to executive session. Going to executive session. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Chairman, would you make a motion to go into executive session?
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
Any comment? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye and raise their hand.
Aye.
Aye. All against? Number four. Ms. Burgess, consideration of resolution R-2025-39, a resolution authorizing the award funds for requests for local accommodations and hospitality taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. This is the resolution that we brought before you at the last meeting. We have added an exhibit A, which primarily provides the findings of fact as to which use within the South Carolina law that we felt like this, that these requests would suffice, I guess, to meet those requirements. We do have... There has been some discussion recently, some email discussion regarding a requested change to one of the items, which would be the JC 250 Committee collectible coins and kiosk build. When we were reviewing the various requests, the $5,400 that was requested for the coins, in that request, it seemed like it was more of a souvenir rather than something like a marketing tool that would bring visitors into the county. I'm told that at some point, and it was actually in the request, that there would be some geocaching where it might be a reward for that. Perhaps when that... It was staff's opinion that when that began, when that geocaching began, that that might be something we could look at down the road. Certainly, as the county, as the council, you can make a decision if you prefer to have that included. I just want to let you know that as staff, we didn't feel like it meant the uses at this point. And the total amount that has been requested is $986,197, and we are anticipating approximately We do have a surplus, nearly 1.5, so we could cover that additional, those additional requests with that surplus, with a portion of that surplus.
Mr. Van Geesem, any question? Not this time. Mr. Arzila?
No, sir.
Mr. Rowl?
No discussion.
Hearing none? Do I have a motion to approve, or disapprove, or amend?
Mr. Chairman, would you make a motion for consideration of resolution R-2025-39?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comment? All those in favor raise their right hand and say aye. Aye. All against? Hearing none? The motion has passed. Have a...
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Burgess, again, consideration of resolution 2025-43, including positions and pay grades with Jasper County as follows. Project manager for engineering services, Department 83; code enforcement generalist, Department 47; paralegal, 102; cybersecurity engineer, Department 49; deputy county administrator, Department 51; administrative assistant, Department 68; two deputies for security of government complex, Department 57; sheriff's department; recreation program coordinator, full-time, part-time, Department 78. Ms. Burgess?
Thank you, members of council. This is, as you stated, a resolution approving these new positions. These new positions are in the fiscal year 26 budget, and as a... To make sure that we have your approval, we brought this resolution to you so that these positions are known to the public as well. They are all included in the budget in those various departments.
Mr. Arzila?
No, sir.
Mr. Van Geesem? No, I'm good. Mr. Rowl?
I'm good with the positions and pay grades. I know that there were some things that we did talk about code enforcement previously to see which department they would best serve under. I hope that we can look at those and have those talks, but as far as for what we have here, I'm good.
My discussion is parks and rec program coordinator. I would like a full-time versus part-time. But it's up to the administrator and parks and rec. How do you want to do it?
Yes, sir. We have it at full-time.
Okay, but didn't you hear it at part-time? All those...
I apologize. It says part-time or full-time, so perhaps we should...
We acknowledge it will be full-time.
Okay.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? Do I have a motion to approve, disapprove, or amend? I'll make a motion to approve resolution R-2025-43. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comment? Hearing none? All those in favor vote aye and raise their right hand. Aye. All against? Hearing none? The motion has passed. Ms. Giles, consideration of resolution R-2025-44 to reappoint two representatives to serve on the Low Country Workforce Development Board. Ms. Giles?
Yes, sir. We have two Jasper County representatives currently at the reappointment on the Low Country Workforce Board. Executive Director Sabrina Graham of the Low Country Council of Governments read a letter formally requesting Jasper County Council's approval to reappoint current members Gregory Gilbert and Roy DePont to continue to serve in their capacity as members on the Low Country Workforce Board. A copy of the letters included in the agenda packet, along with a listing of the current Workforce Development Board members for Jasper County. Staff recommends that council consider reappointing Gregory Gilbert and Roy DePont for reappointment to the Low Country Council Workforce Board as Jasper County representatives. These are for three-year terms for each member as set forth by the Low Country Workforce Board governing documents for the new terms, which will run from July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2028. The effective date of this resolution would be 6/30/2025, and approved, and would be represented by this meeting of the Jasper County Council.
Mr. Van Geesem, any comments or any discussion? No. Mr. Arzila?
No, sir.
Mr. Rowl?
No discussion.
Just one of my discussion is that from now on, at least as I'm chairman, all comments will be done by resolution so we can put it and codify it, and so if there's any discussion, we have it in record. Do I have a motion to approve, disapprove, or amend?
Make a motion if we consider approval of resolution R-2025-44, reappoint the two representatives to serve on the Low Country Workforce Development Board.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
All those in favor raise their right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All against? Hearing none? The motion has passed. I'm glad this is the last time I have to do this, I hope. Ms. Burgess, consideration of third reading of ordinance O-2025-14 to provide the levy of tax for the public purposes in Jasper County for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2026, and to make appropriations for said purposes to adopt and approve Jasper County capital operations... Excuse me. Capital and operation budget for fiscal year 2025-2026 to adopt, approve the Jasper County School District capital and operation budget for fiscal year 2025-2026, to provide for the levy of taxation for the fiscal year 2025-2026, to limit the dispersment by the county treasurer to those appropriate by law, provide that expenditures not exceed appropriations to authorize tax anticipation notes, to make authorizations of certain transfers to provide for additional appropriations and borrowing, to codify Jasper County rates and fees, to provide for lapsing funds and continuing appropriations for subsequent years to require certain agencies and departments to file accountings, to require the treasurer to sign general fund checks, to provide special rules for travel and training dispersments, to provide for travel reimbursements, to provide for compliance with Act Number 317-09 of 1990, to provide certain benefits to council members, to provide for county commission and committee stipends, to provide for jury mileage, to adopt property values, and to provide for effective date of this ordinance and matters related thereto. First reading was 5:19. The second reading was 6:16, and the public hearing was 6:16. Ms. Burgess? You sat down for that, didn't you?
Pardon me?
You sat down for that, didn't you?
Yes, I figured I'd wait. Thank you. Again, as you read, this is the third reading of the ordinance for the fiscal year 26 budget. I have the ordinance available. I also have the budget worksheet, the fee schedule. I'm not sure if you wanted to discuss anything in particular, so I'm just here to... If you have any additional questions or concerns.
Mr. Van Geesem? Do you have any question?
No, it looks like everything has needed to be added. I think I'm pretty good.
Mr. Arzila?
Mr. Chairman, I think you're going to be putting a few things in the record. That's good enough for me.
Mr. Rowl?
Do you have one thing? Unfortunately, I wasn't able to be here last week, but as it pertains to the school district and some of the things there, it feels to me like in the midst of things, we're being held hostage by the lack of different things that are coming through, the timely fashions. So I'm kind of disappointed with those things and direction that is there. Hopefully, there was someone from the school district here tonight. I don't think I see anyone here, but definitely not pleased.
I have a statement, I guess, here. This is going to be quite lengthy. You can sit down. In early 2024, the Jasper County School Board hired an accounting firm with approval of the State Board of Education. On December 2024, the state declared Jasper County School System in its status of financial emergency. When the Jasper Council heard this, they inquired if this would affect the upcoming 2025-2026 budget. The council was informed would not have any effect on the completing of the budget. To this point, Jasper County has not been updated on the happenings of the school board and other than our own inquiries. On March 10th, Mr. Zimmerman stated that it was not a takeover, but the state was offering technical assistance. On May 15th, Jasper County Treasurer Mike Skinner, a public... At a public school board meeting, stated that with the money on hand, the board should consider reducing the mileage. No figure was given, and the board did not ask, ending with a statement that they were intending to ask for the same note as last year. In June, the council requested the school board present their budget on June 11th at a council workshop. On June 9th, the council was informed that the school board would not attend. The council felt that the school board should have come before us to give... to give an explanation of their absence. Subsequently, correspondence with the chair of the school board told us that Norris had been hired by the board at the request of the state to write a tenable budget. The chairperson gave us a timeline for the second reading on June twenty-third via Zoom, a public meeting on the twenty-fifth, and after the public meeting, a special meeting to provide the third reading. After the third reading, the school board would meet with us at the scheduled workshop. The twenty-fifth, the June twenty-fifth workshop started with a school board chairperson introducing the attending board members and Ms. Norris. Ms. Norris made it very clear she was only on the job two weeks and was not in any position to support the new budget without completing the two previous budget audits. Though Ms. Norris had only two weeks, the council was expected to pass a budget with only one hour presentation. Ms. Norris did not mention, did mention an eight million dollar contingency. The meeting was contentious at best. The council was given a generalization of the school budget in seven pages of detail just before the presentation. The council had previously informed the school board chair that we would have had questions and would be prepared. When we asked about the debt, no information was provided, and Ms. Norris told us it was not part of the budget. The county council was asked to keep the same mileage as last year, one hundred and sixty-six mils. On the twenty-sixth, I called Melissa Crosby, who is a representative from the state. I expressed a feeling that council was having a difficult time justifying the school board budget after being told of the financial problems of the school, the lack of information to justify the budget as presented, and the feeling the council was made to be complicit in the problems of the school. After the discussion, Ms. Crosby said she would call the Secretary of Education and express my concerns. She called me back and said the state was going to talk to the previous audit firm and provide us with a letter giving us assurances of the budget. She also stated she was going to suggest the state call me, me and myself, to review the letter. I also called our state board member to inform him of the problem we were having. On Friday, the twenty-seventh, at fourteen thirty hours, which is two thirty, I received an email from Kendra Hunt, the Chief of Staff, is that the deputy administrator of the school board, state school, supporting the audit's recommendation to approve the budget and strongly suggesting we approve the budget. This email did not offer any assurances or state support other than supporting the audit's report. The council wants the state to take ownership on the solution of the school problem. No call was received to discuss what we received or if the wording was what the council required to pass the budget as is. It was mentioned the South Carolina Department of Education had not devolved in the affairs of the school board. From our perspective, we have not put, they have not put anything in writing to the county on what the active involvement is. Ms. Crosby prepared the audit, made it, with a suggestion from state. Previously, we had been informed the state is assisting and not controlling the school's physical operation. The state has been dealing with this situation for five months. In one statement, in another statement, the school board states early twenty twenty-four. With this ongoing, the council wants the state to take ownership. Not only, not once did the state think to call the county and advise us of the situation. The council now is taking the position that enough is enough. This situation is not new, has been ongoing for at least ten years. Now the state has put Jasper County in a tenuous position. You want the county to pass the budget. We know little about it. The audit firm states, in my past experience over sixty, twenty-six years, are working, of working with local governments and more specifically, normal school districts. When a school district gets behind in closing out their fiscal year and having their audit completed, it usually means that fiscal condition is not good. And when we performed a cursory review, we found material errors in the trial balance with so much unknown for the twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five fiscal years. I think it is very appropriate for the district to have significant contingency included in the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget, which I have heard Ms. Norris reference in our presentation. That is a quote from the auditor. The council understands the need, but does not feel it is well enough informed to proceed without an ironclad assurance from the state that this matter will be brought to a conclusion and the residents of Jasper will be informed, made right, and approving the budget, and will be instrumental in providing a path to a better school system. On Friday, June twenty-seventh, the administrator, Andy Fulgham, and myself expressed this to the state. We want the state to be a partner in action, in writing as well as action. The justification to pass the budget for the betterment of the kid is an idle justification. If this were true and believable, we would not be in this situation. The county, the state has given us what we feel are assurances that this budget as presented is needed. They have and will support us in our budget approval and will keep us informed and allow us to be a partner in improving our schools. Do you have the letter? This is the letter from the state. Thank you again for the opportunity. This is from the Secretary, State Superintendent of Education, Ellen Weaver. Honorable John Kemp, Chairman of Jasper County Council, thank you again for the opportunity to follow up on the communication clearly shared by Deputy Superintendent and the South Carolina Department of Education Chief Financial Officer, Kendra Hunt, as well as our Chief of Staff Rebecca, I have not her last name. Guns in last, sir? Guns in last, sir? Chiefs. Anyway, as you know, the South Carolina Department of Education has received the recommendation from Mr. Larry Finley, partner of Green Finley Harley LLP, and the external order for Jasper County School District. His assessment reflects the district's current financial emergency status and challenges that have developed over several years. We recognize the county faces difficult decision as considers how to move forward with the mileage rate on certain conditions. We fully understand the weight of the responsibility, particularly given the competing demand you must balance in serving the county's residents. Whilst SCDE is not in a position to make a specific reservation. Regarding the mileage rate, we want to ensure you have a clear understanding of our role and ongoing efforts. With the recent placement of a full-time interim CFO and the continued oversight by the South Carolina Department of Education, we are focused on rebuilding the district's financial foundation. This includes strengthening internal processes, improving transparency, and ensuring more reliable reporting to stakeholders. Additionally, the findings of the state Inspector General's investigation, once completed, will help inform a more comprehensive plan to move the district towards long-term stability. We are committed to maintaining open lines of communication with the county council as we work through this transition. We believe that continued coordination and mutual understandings between the county and the South Carolina Department of Education will essentially support the students and families of Jasper County in the months and years ahead. Thank you again for your partnership, your continued commitment to the success of the community. Please don't hesitate to reach out if there's anything we can clarify or provide. Signed, Ellen E. Weaver, State Superintendent of Education. I bring this out because of this budget. We are stuck in the middle of, of a fight between state and the Jasper Board of Education. We're the ones that are going to say yes or no. We don't want to be complicit, we want to help. So going forward, we are going to pass this budget with an amendment. And we'll go from there. Do we have any discussion, Mr. Vinghizan? Uh, not at this time. Mr. Orzillo.
No, sir.
Mr. Rowell.
And no discussion.
I'd like to make an amendment to the school board budget by decreasing the mileage from one sixty-six to one sixty-four. Do I have a motion to approve, disapprove, or amend?
Mr. Chairman, would you like to make a motion to approve that reduction from one sixty-six to one sixty-four?
Do I have a second? Second. All those in favor, raise your right. No, I'm going to do it this way. I'm going to do it by voice vote. Mr. Vinghizan.
Aye.
Mr. Orzillo.
Aye.
Mr. Rowell.
Aye.
Mr. Kemp. I would like to make a motion to pass the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget with the amendment of reducing the mileage from one sixty-six to one sixty-four on the school budget.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we pass the third reading of the budget with the reduction of mileage to operating school district mileage from one sixty-six to one sixty-four.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any comments, Mr. Vinghizan?
It's just the two percent there. It could have been more.
Mr. Orzillo.
I'd just like to state that when we have questions, we're voting on something like this, we have to have answers. And there's nothing else to say. We cannot vote on this stuff without getting answers. And I hope in the future, we will get some answers so that we can make the best decision. If someone doesn't like the decision made, know that it is the best we can with what has been given to us. Thank you.
Mr. Rowell, just want to state that going on the days of the rubber stamp, we need to make sure that we're getting actual factual data that supports what they need and for anything of the budget we've been born. So that's where I stand there.
My comment is, we reduce the mileage, show that we can reduce the mileage without hurting. Number one. Number two is we have an ordinance in first reading that we can amend this up or down or correct. As in the letter, there's a report coming out. If that shows something different, we can amend this budget. But we had to, we had to do a statement. This council had to do a statement with this school and the school and the state that we are stopping the passing down the line of this school. We have to improve our schools. We're growing, we have to improve our schools. I think we try to say, we're trying to help with you, but we're also there, you better be coming to us with information so we can make good decisions. Hearing that, I'm going to have a voice, again, a voice vote. Mr. Vinghizan, do I have a, do I have a motion that I don't want? Yes, we have a motion. Uh, Mr. Vinghizan, you have your name?
Yay.
Mr. Orzillo.
Yay.
Mr. Rowell.
Yay.
Mr. Kemp. Yay. The motion has passed.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, is it the council's desire to have the State Superintendent's letter placed on the record for the meeting and included in the minutes?
Uh, number eight, consideration, Mr. Fulgham, consideration of the first reading and orders to authorize a comprehensive agreement and lease between Jasper County and Jasper County Animal Rescue JARM for the use of that real property located at four oh one Carazin Road Ridge, South Carolina, in provision of services to operate the county animal shelter.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, this is still very much a work in progress. We are respectfully requesting your consideration of accepting this ordinance for first reading this evening. It allows us to continue to work with JARM and their proposed merger with Powell, an agreement that provides all those things that we've enjoyed over the years with JARM. It has some different commitments in there in draft form at this point. But this adoption of this for the first reading will allow us to keep moving with this. As we all discussed, you had a special executive session on June twelfth, and so this is just following up for that. Be happy to answer any questions that you have, but ultimately requesting your acceptance of this for first reading this evening.
Mr. Vinghizan, as we're passing this first reading, does this keep JARM going as of tomorrow?
Yes, sir. Essentially, you're moving forward, trying to create an arrangement with the new JARM, if you will.
Right.
And so we think that's important.
So tomorrow will be exactly like today. There's no changes, no difference. It's just the reading of this first one.
Yes, sir. I think we're all operating in the same limbo that we've been in, but we're trying to move forward to having a more solidified agreement for you. This allows us to continue to that process.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Orzillo.
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Rowell.
Councilman Vinghizan asked what I was going to ask, so I'm good.
And I'm good too. So I'd like to have a motion to approve, disapprove, or amend. I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of deordnance and a comprehensive agreement and lease between Jasper County and Jasper Animal Rescue Mission JARM for the use of that real property located at four oh one Carazin Road Ridge on South Carolina, in provision of services to operate the county animal shelter. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
Any comment? You know, you wouldn't read my letter from the second reading, but you'd read that. Yeah, that's fine. Just giving you love. Yeah, I know. All those in favor, raise their right hands, say aye.
Aye.
All against, hearing none, motion has passed. Ms. Burgess, consider.
I'm sorry, I missed who made the second.
What?
Who made the second?
Orzillo.
Consideration of first, oops, wrong one. Consideration of special service contract with Crowley Westler and Associates for the computation, compilation?
Compilation.
Compilation, thank you very much. In preparation of the annual comprehensive financial report for the year end June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Ms. Burgess.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council. This is a request for the council to approve the engagement letter with Crowley Westler and Associates LLC to, as you stated, to perform the compilation and the preparation of the annual comprehensive financial report, which is essential for us to move forward with the audit that is actually performed by another company. And this is, it falls under the section two dash four fifteen B of the purchasing and contracting ordinance. And you have the comprehensive, you have that engagement letter. It is at a billing rate of one hundred and seventy-five dollars per hour plus out-of-pocket cost. And it authorizes the county administrator. We're asking that you authorize the county administrator to execute the agreement. And it helps us, we have a limited staff, as you're aware. And Ms. Crowley Westler and Associates provide needed, needed work as far as separation of duties, as far as reconciling bank accounts. They don't. They don't do any audit, it's just to make sure that everything falls in the proper accounts, line items, and that those items get put properly into the annual financial statement for the auditors.
Mr. Van Geesem? I see an hourly rate. Do you have any idea of what, how many hours it would take or?
Well, it should take less than it did last year.
What was last year's?
Last year, the number of hours, I don't recall. I know that it was probably, I want to say maybe 85,000 total, 65,000 to 80,000, but the finance staff has done all of the recording of the revenue, the treasurer's office, all of the deposits and the transfers that have been made. There are some items that, you know, that still need to be done, but last year, when Crowley Wexler came in, they came in in February and had to catch up from July through February, they came in in March, to record the revenue. So that has been taken over by the finance committee, the finance department. There would be far less work for them to do. We're in a much better position as far as bank accounts, what's been recorded. We've reviewed the operating accounts. We don't really, we haven't reviewed the tax, the treasurer's tax account, so that's something that Crowley and Wexler will spend some time doing, the reconciliations of the tax accounts. That's something that, we don't really have all the information in the finance department to do that, so I don't anticipate that it would be, I can't give you a number, but it's an hour amount, but it will be less than last year's. I have no doubts about that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Orzillo?
No, thank you.
Mr. Rowell?
I know that last year, whenever we engaged this contract, definitely I had some questions about it, and I do know that right now you are not adequately staffed in your departments, and this will greatly help you to get there, but at what point could we transition from doing this to doing this on our own? Because this is just all prep, correct?
This is, so, well, this is, yes, compilation, so Ms. Wexler is actually teaching us how to do much of what they have come in in the past to do, and the plan is hopefully to take that and spread it out to each of the departments so that they perform it and we review it. So then we'll have that second set of eyes on it, which is what Crowley and Wexler serve for us right now. They deserve that second set of eyes. So as we move forward in this audit or in the preparation for this year's audit, the plan is to have much of that, we learn that and then we disseminate that information to the various departments, so that next year it will be even, even less services, perhaps maybe just compiling the financial statements or not. Maybe we'll have, be at a point where we can do that as well. But the plan is to be independent at some point, but it might just take a year or two.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
How long has Wexler been doing this?
I believe we've had that conversation in the past, and it's been probably 30 years that she's been working for the county and various, with various treasurers, various finance directors, various county administrators.
You remember also during that, that we said this year we were not going to use that?
Yes, sir, and I did do, I did reach out to another company, but at the time, they wanted $200, $250 an hour, and we would have to teach them, and we're not in a position to teach anyone at this point. We need to be taught, so I felt like this would be, I understand that you did not want to use them, but also, we don't have any other resources available that someone who can teach us, so we're asking that Crowley and Wexler be allowed, particularly this year, so that we can be taught how to do these moving forward. It's a progress, it's a progressive plan.
Well, we had a whole, we had a whole year to change this.
Yes, sir, but we have been under dire circumstances.
How many people do you have in your office?
Including me, three.
Great, how many are you supposed to have?
Well, we're supposed to have five, including me. We have not been able to find, we've tried to fill those positions a couple of times. We've actually revised the budget this year to just for one, so we would have a total of four. We have brought in attempts throughout the, throughout the year, they did not work out, and they did not have the skill sets needed for these particular jobs that we have available in positions. So in order to get this audit done, we felt like it was best to bring Crowley Wexler and Associates back. They're familiar, they know how it works, and certainly they have the skill sets to do this, and as a CPA firm, they're extremely professional and are willing to teach us, knowing that at some point, the county will be doing this largely on its own.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Say aye.
Aye.
All against? Aye. Motion has passed. Can you do this one? Consideration, it's my ordinance, but I'll have the lawyer do the, attorney do the. Consideration of first reading of the ordinance to amend an add subsection to Jasper County South Carolina Code of Ordinances, Chapter 26, Taxation, Article 1 in general.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was council, council members, especially Mr. Kemp, have been looking at our orders, and he has had particular interest in the tax sale process and other matters over the past year or two. We determined in the last review that the fine for failing to comply with a bid was out of sync with the statute, state statute, which had increased the amount from $300 to $500. It wasn't really clear in our ordinance the penalties for a serial defaulting bidder, if you will, someone that comes in for year after year, bids and doesn't pay, keeps the property off the tax sale list, and it keeps us from collecting taxes along the way. So what this does is it amends the section that provides for the penalty to a $500 defaulter, $500 fine for a defaulter, and that they don't get to bid again in tax sale until they pay the fine and sit out for two years, and if they are also, it also affects an affiliate company or entity that they may be involved in. You can't use a shell company to get around the no-bid proceeding, and if it's an entity, you can't let the ABC company become the ACV company with the same ownership and do the same thing. That's basically all it does, and at some rate or number of the ordinance to get it back right again.
Mr. Van Geesem? Do I have more questions? Mr. Orzillo?
Like I said, I know how this got here, and that's through a lot of work from the chair who invited us here, and I'm ready to move on.
Mr. Rowell?
I'd like to go the same thing Councilman Orzillo said and just put it kind of on your part. Everything we've done is 100%, no, anything can happen later on, correct?
We hope not. Well, I, my discussion is that this was, I guess you could do a comment too, but the question is that we needed to look at this, people were using this to skirt the issue, and this is becoming unfair to a lot of people, and it happens with Ayers property. This was starting to affect Ayers property. So I had multiple reasons for changing this, and it's not us that, we're not the only one doing this. This is across the board, across what I've researched.
And that's correct, Mr. Kemp. Our research shows that this is a frequent problem across the state and other counties.
And that's, hopefully this will help our cause. Anyway, do I have a motion to approve, disapprove, or amend?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for consideration of approval for first reading of an ordinance to amend the new subsection to the Jasper County South Carolina Code of Ordinances, Chapter 26, Taxation, Article 1 in general.
Do I have a second? I'll second. Any comment? Hearing none, comments, I'd like to have a motion, a vote to approve, disapprove, to approve, excuse me, to approve the motion. All those in favor, raise their right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All against? Hearing none, motion has passed. I'd like to have a motion, a discussion on a motion to adjourn. Hearing none, I'd like to make, have a motion to adjourn. I'd like to motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Any comment?
This is the fastest meeting we've had in a while.
And I think we had, we put a shot across the back. Thank you very much.